will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by sections 551, 074, 551, 082, 551, 072, and 551, 071 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Law. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regards to any matters considered in such closed or executive session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be made upon the reconvening of this public meeting. A closed session of the Board will now be held. It is 7:01 PM. It is now 7:47 PM. We will now call this special public meeting of the Board of Trustees, Umbol Independent School District, to order. We will move into our first item at that of closed session. Ms. Dixon?
Just one moment, please. Having a little technical difficulty. I move that the Board approve the Administration's Personnel Recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
It has been properly motion. Second. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Opposed by the same. Motion carries. Okay. And we're going to go into some open items here. Yeah, four. The Board will now hold a public hearing on the budget as required by Texas Education Code 44004F. The Board may hear public comments, discuss, and may adopt the budget. The Board encourages comments from the citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure as outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that the comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. We, now Dr. Fagan, going to turn it over to...
Yes. Mr. Seal is going to do a brief review of the information that the Board will be voting on tonight regarding our budget for next year, and then we'll be happy to take that public hearing comments, and then from there we'll go to the action item.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. You have in front of you our budget highlight sheet, which I give to the Board each year. On the back of this or the front, depending on which side you turn to first, is the budget we will be asking you to adopt, reminding you that the Board adopts the General Fund Budget, Child Nutrition Fund, and Debt Service Fund Budget. Also remind you that you will not be adopting a tax rate this evening. We will not get our certified values until later in the summer. Though we do not anticipate a tax rate increase, it's not appropriate for the Board to adopt the tax rate that supports this budget until we have those certified values. On the other side are the budget highlights, and we have gone through most of these with one exception, and I will ask Dr. Fagan to address that when we get to that item. I wanted to remind you that of our budget goals and our focus, to recover, refresh, and rejuvenate, basically to say, get re-energized, get things back in order after Hurricane Harvey, to enhance safety and security, to reward staff, to continue to upgrade technology, to leverage the 2018 bond election to move renovation dollars back into the classroom. And I had a question about that from the newspapers, exactly what that means. Really what it means is, in the past, for the past three or four years, because we had spent the dollars from the 2008 bond, if a roof went bad, if an air conditioning system went bad, rather than being able to turn to the bond to fund those expenses, we had to go to the operating budget. We had to draw on the same monies that we used to pay a teacher's salary or to pay for classroom supplies. So passage of the bond referendum is a great thing for this district, and it has allowed us to bring you a balanced budget this year. And then the final category, maintain, Dr. Fagan pointed out the other day, that that doesn't mean we're just going to tread water and sit where we are. We're going to maintain the momentum we have. So for instance, we have been doing a rollout of technology for campuses, refresh program. We will continue that. We talked to you last year about moving all of our pre-K programs to full-day pre-K. We've advanced on that. We've continued that momentum. Update of the legislative outlook again. We are working feverishly with FEMA, and FEMA is working feverishly with us. They have to jump through a lot of hoops to get us money. I believe we will have a good outcome. It may not be as timely as we want, but we'll weather that storm and we'll recover nicely. Again, the state has made promises that they would make up for reappraisals and lost property values and some of the expenses that FEMA won't cover. And I know that the Board plans on preparing something prior to the legislature to say, this is what we believe that assistance should look like. Going through the budget highlights, and I won't go through all of these in any detail, but I'll just touch on them again. We're looking at awarding every employee in the district an average 2% raise, increasing the starting teacher salary to $54,400. That will put us right there along with the highest-paying districts in terms of starting salaries. We're adding 153 new staff positions. That's a relatively high figure because you dedicate so much unique staff to opening a middle school as we are this year. But as you'll see, those first categories, about 110 of our positions, are going to be positions that are going to be housed right there on those campuses, teachers, teachers' aides, and campus support positions. We're also adding eight police officers. We're putting five and a half additional positions to our 504, dyslexia to those programs, eight other positions that are kind of district-wide positions, and then finally, 10 contingency positions that are there so that when students start to show up at the beginning of the school year and we see that we need another teacher or two, we have your authorization to go ahead and hire. As I mentioned, completing our transition to full-day pre-K for all campuses. We had done that for all of our Title I campuses through last year, but we had another couple of campuses we wanted to add this year. Staffed and open Westlake Middle. We're funding a lot of district-wide safety and security enhancements, including the additional police officers we mentioned a little while ago. The next one, I'll let Dr. Fagan mention this one. This is one that we did not make it, it did not make it onto a budget highlight sheet. That just was my error in not highlighting that, but I think it's worth noting what this will do for our district.
So as I've mentioned before, the TEA has decided that they will allow students to take alternative assessments like the ACT, the PLAN, the PSAT, and the SAT. And if they score at a certain level, they will then allow those students to use those tests and those scores in place of the traditional EOC or end-of-course exams. And so we want to make sure that all students in our district have those opportunities available to them. A lot of students really value the ACT, the PSAT, and the SAT for a variety of reasons, college preparation, national merit semifinalists, and more, things like that. And so they really want to take those exams and are motivated to do so. And the ability to use those scores in place of these end-of-course exams, which are high-pressure exams at the very end of the year, is something that's been very inviting to students. We want to make sure that we support our students and our families in doing so. However, it is worth noting that the TEA has decided that students who score very well on these exams cannot reach the master's-level designation on the EOCs. They can only reach the second level. So you have a lot of students who are very accomplished students, will score very well on a standardized assessment, who are sort of given a ceiling when they use the PSAT or the ACT in place of an EOC, which actually will have an impact on scores at schools and the letter grades, if you will, that TEA is going to assign. So I think it's important for folks to know that Umbol ISD is, as always, doing what's best for our students and our families, focusing on that opportunity to not have an EOC hanging over a student's head who's completing Biology or Algebra I, English I. But at the same time, there could be an impact to the overall schools' grades and ratings. And I think that story really needs to be told so that people understand that when a district chooses to do what's best for students, they're also taking that risk with their own scores. But nonetheless, we have decided to fund this for all students who choose to go down this pathway because we know it's best for them.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next is the, should be no surprise to anyone, our property and casualty insurance rates went through the roof this year. I will say that we are still, this is not a high point for the district in terms of cost per $100,000 of coverage. Our rates hit an all-time low this last year because we had such great claims history. And then the skies opened up, and so now they're making some of that money back. As you know, we are transitioning to a owned wireless infrastructure system, which will have annual savings to us. And those monies have been made available to do other technology enhancements. For instance, you also know that we have our backup technology systems off-site for better security and to keep them out of the floodwaters. We are funding Phase II of the Campus Computer Refresh Plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we're leveraging our bonds so that we can put maximum dollars back into the classroom. Are there any questions about any of the budget initiatives or budget highlights we've gone over? All right, then I will remind you that during the May 29 workshop, I told you that we were going to target an expenditure budget of about $374 million. That was, as I've explained to you before, we get, have to make a book entry called TRS on behalf. That's the state's contribution to TRS for our employees. If they give us $14 million, we book $14 million to revenue, $14 million to expenses. So having a balanced budget, it's not important to know how much those funds are. At this time, we didn't. Now we have a better handle on it. So the next slide, the budget you will adopt, does include the adjusted TRS on behalf contribution that we expect for next year. You'll see that state and local taxes, or local taxes and other local revenues, pretty much balanced. In fact, the state is a little bit ahead, but that's a bit deceptive for this year. Because of the state provision that allowed us to feed every student a free lunch this last year, we have a one-time artificial growth in revenue for, and because that drives our comp-ed funding, we have a one-time artificial revenue bump of about $7 million for comp-ed funding. So was that not the case, we would be at about $185 million, they would be at about $178 million. Steadily, year after year, the local jurisdiction, particularly Umbol ISD, is taking on more of the total burden financially for educating our students, and the state is taking on a smaller share. Then federal programs, about $4.6 million. So this is what we told you we were going to target on May the 29. The proposed budget that we'll bring you this evening has $185 million in local revenue, about $186.6 million in state program revenue, for a total, and then $4.6 million of federal, total of $376 million, total expenditures of $375,500,000. So a surplus of about $800,000. And this does include that adjustment that took you from figures that we showed you on May the 29th to the figures we have now, that TRS adjustment of $940,000. So that will be our proposed maintenance and operations budget for the current year. And all of the items that we've mentioned in our workshops, all of the items listed on the budget highlights are funded through this program, through this budget. When we had the workshop, we didn't have our child nutrition numbers. We have them now. Local revenue, $9 million. State program, $90,000. We've had members of the community, members of the Board, from time to time saying, do we really have to take the federal money for our meals? The answer is, if we didn't, we would have to find a way to generate an additional $10 million locally. So we're, that hook is firmly in our mouth, and we're not going to get loose from that very quickly. We always adopt a balanced budget by regulation for child nutrition. Most years, we put some money in the bank because our folks do a great job of cutting expenses, and that money then we can use for capital improvements related to child nutrition in the future, in the next year. Then finally, our debt service budget. This is the debt service budget as it stands if we were not going to sell bonds in August. Because we don't know exactly how much we're going to sell or what the debt service burden will be for the current year, we ask you to adopt this debt service budget, which has a surplus of about $5 million. And then we will come back to you after the bond sale and ask you to amend the budget. And then this is, all of those budgets totaled together. Local taxes and other revenue, $258 million. State program revenue, $188.5. Federal program revenue, almost $15 million. And remember, most of that is reimbursement for free and reduced meals. That gives us $461,581,31 in total revenue, total expenses, $455,819,792, with a surplus for all three of those funds together of a little over $5.7 million. And all but $900,000 of that is surplus in debt service, which will go away when we sell the new bonds. Any questions about this part? And I will come back to you when I finish very quickly and give you another opportunity.
Yeah, Mike, I've got a quick question on the debt service. We were projecting a surplus, but that's before the bond sale. So what we passed at the last Board meeting was up to $150 million.
Yes, sir.
And we feel like that, based on what we know and based on our assumptions, that a max of $150 million with our current revenue stream and surplus, that we're, we will be able to cover that?
Yes, sir. We will, we will end up with a, I'm pretty sure that we will end up with a balanced debt service budget. Now, we do have a healthy reserve in debt service that's there specifically to iron out times when, so that we don't have to raise and lower taxes back and forth. We have a reserve there that allows us to, in one year, if our debt service is a couple of million dollars higher than it'll be the next year, to go into reserves. I don't believe that'll happen this year, but I can't tell you for sure because we structure these bonds, we do a negotiated sale and structure these bonds to get the maximum benefit of interest rate. And our reserves in our system give us the ability to do that.
Okay. And so you pretty much answered this, but I want to make sure that we're all clear that before we go out to sell, we're going to look at the interest rate environment, look at what the debt service is going to look like to ensure that we're not going to have to raise the tax rate, correct?
Yes, sir. We always, what we keep as our overriding directive is we do not sell bonds unless we can fund that debt service without raising taxes.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions about this section? Let me just close by saying the same thing that I say every year. We've involved the Board in this process from as early on as we could. This year, it's been a little bit more of a challenge because we were so late in getting a handle on what our local property values would be. We believe that we've taken the Board's guidance and the things that are important to the Board, and we've included this in the budget. We've addressed our goals. We believe that this budget appropriately addresses the educational and developmental needs of our students in this district in a manner that is fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of our district. If the Board agrees with me, when it comes to the Board, it comes time for the Board to take a vote, then we hope you will support this budget. If the, do the Board members have any other questions or comments?
Mike, I just want to tell you thank you and your staff for all the hard work you guys did this year, especially after Harvey and all the work. It was, it's been a heck of a year. And I also want to thank you publicly for the work in the past, you and Lynn Lynn, your predecessor, for making sure we had that reserve in place and keeping that reserve in place so we can withstand and rebuild Kingwood the way we did. It was, without it, I don't know where we would be as a district. So thank you, and thank, thank your staff for all of that work in the past and for this year. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your kind words. It is always a pleasure. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, one more comment, and you touched on it earlier, and I'm glad that you clarified the idea. Because I made a comment to someone one day about how we're actually going to be able to put more money into, back into the classroom because we're not using general fund for maintenance, maintenance, new roofs, things that are going to be, have longevity, 20 years, 15 years, those kind of things. And that is big with the, with the bond referendum we were able to pass because now we don't have to budget those type items into our annual budget, and we can also project and identify those needs through the facility study with replacement cycles and so forth. So as we're looking at selling bonds and prioritizing needs and so forth, it's not just about building schools, it's maintaining our existing schools at the level that they need to be. So I appreciate your clarification on that as well.
Anything else from the Board? If not, it is appropriate for us to open the public hearing portion of this and receive any questions or comments from members of the public or members of the press. Hopefully not from my staff. But any questions or comments that you might have before the Board considers this for a vote? There being none, I will turn it back to Dr. Fagan and the Board.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Seal. Are there any more comments and questions, Board members? Not? Ms. Dixon, we have an action item.
I move that the Board adopt the 2018-19 budget for the General Fund, National School Breakfast and Lunch Program Fund, and the Debt Service Fund as presented.
It's been properly motioned, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed by the same? Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along, we will try to get into our consent agenda. Ms. Dixon, I will ask if you will assist me here.
Okay.
As we are now at six. So 6A is going to be budgetary amendments and commitments of fund balance that approved. 6B, 2018-19, construction and construction-related purchases.
Pull.
That is a pull. C, consideration to increase owner's contingency for Anzlo Bryant, construction manager at risk contract, consent. D will be the 2017-18 goods, professional service, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in aggregate or $25,000 individually.
Pull.
D is pull. 6E, the 2018-19 goods services, goods, professional services and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in aggregate or $25,000 individually.
Pull.
That was E. Pull. And F, memorandum of understanding with the Harris County District Attorney's Office. That is consent. All right, Ms. Dixon, if you would, read that back for me, please.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the following items by consent. 6A, 6C, and 6F.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, right hand? All opposed by the same? Okay, okay, motion carries. Let's go back to 6B. Thank you, Madam Vice President. 6B, may I have a motion, please? Okay. Ms. Dixon, I believe you pulled that one.
I just had a few questions about a few of the items on the CV contracts PDF. First, there are quite a few purchases under the 2008 bond. So I was wondering if you can give me a number of how much is left in the 2008 bond? Mr. Seal?
Okay.
What we have done with the 2008 bond is... Other projects have been... From those projects, get popping in the contingency. Pop them into that line and then allocate.
Okay. Until the end of that process, okay. And then one of the items on here, TAB Technologies, I was just wondering what that was, if you could just explain, or if someone can share. The testing, adjusting, balancing of air and hydronic systems, was that something dealing with air quality or... Of the airflow, okay. I just was confused by that one. I was like, what is that? Okay. And then the last question I had is about, one of the architectural services listed here, STAN-TEC. So is that, it doesn't say what that is coming from. Is that, you know, I know architects are typically tied to bonds. Is that with the 2008 bond, or did RFQ go out for that service? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and STAN-TEC was SHW. SHW designed and built the Emergency Operations Center.
Okay.
And they did one other project after that, I believe. But I know that was their...
It was one of the projects, I can't recall it.
It was a smaller project after that, but it was because they did the EOC.
Okay.
And so they were part of the 2008 pool.
Oh, in the beginning, okay. I just, since it didn't say, I was, I was a little confused on how that read. Okay. Thank you very much. Non-bond, okay.
Thank you, yeah, I think you're right. And and Dr. Fagan, can I, can I say what we're doing right now as far as architects?
Yes, go ahead. We're almost, we're almost launching that out, are we not?
Oh, I can't? Okay.
Not on the agenda, yeah. If it's not on the agenda here, so.
Perfect.
Good job, Stephanie. Anything else, Ms. Dixon? You good?
No, that's it, thank you.
Any other member? Okay, no more questions. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. I believe we had, okay, 6D. 6D. All right. Second, all right. Ms. Dixon, I think you pulled that one also.
Right, in building and planning, we talk a lot about automated logic. So I definitely understand what we're talking about here. But with that estimated increase, I was just wondering if you could remind me, and I know Nolan's not here today, Mr. Correa, but how many schools or facilities will this increase cover? Do we know?
We don't have that here, but we can certainly get it to you. As you know, this is one of the companies that we have used in the past
Right.
for our control systems. And so we've been doing a fair amount of work on all of our control systems to make sure that we have the ability to regulate the temperatures in our schools. So my guess is that this is some of their particular schools that are being worked on. And so he's
Okay.
That's, that's
Perhaps this building.
Perhaps this building.
Okay, I just didn't know, we had, I know we've discussed this in building and planning a lot, but I just didn't know if this was a certain percentage of facilities that will cover, be covered with the $630,000.
I don't know the answer to that. It's how many buildings are currently under automated logic as a control system and how many are under UNIFI. So we'd have to get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess I just have just a kind of a point of clarification. So we're down to just two that we're using now, Unified and Automated Logic?
I don't think we have them all that way yet.
Okay.
UNIFI is newest, yeah.
Right.
And then we have the old, like, pneumatic.
Pneumatic, okay, so we still got it. Okay, good.
And Mr. Cunningham, Mr. President, if I'm not mistaken, we still have some of the antiquated systems. We have about seven different systems in use. Unified and Automated Logic use the same materials, same devices, are very similar. That can be, that can be worked on simultaneously. So while we're leaning towards that platform, it hasn't all been converted. And I think there's another agenda item that Ms. Dixon pulled that's going to show a Unified line item on it as well.
Yes, it does. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor here. All in favor, right hand? All opposed the same? Motion carries. Okay, we're down to 6E. Have a motion, please. Thank you.
I just have one really quick question on the Balfour Company. Is that a one, is that a one-year commitment with Balfour? Or are we under contract with Balfour to provide our yearbooks, awards, jackets, graduations, and commemorative items?
I'd have to look and see. I believe that they did a multi-year review, the high school principals and others, either last year or the year before, did a multi-year review and they selected Balfour. I'm not sure how many years are left on that particular procurement. Do you remember? No? We would have to, we'd have to get that information for you.
Okay.
I seem to think it was a three-year commitment, but I don't know how many years ago it was.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, is that, is that, is that standard across all of our high schools now?
No, we have Jostons.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Right.
So, so I know that a few years ago, when we, when Mr. Daniels took over at Tascasita, we had a lot of changeover on our building administrators. They all were given the opportunity to interview different vendors. And Jostons had a couple of schools, Balfour had a few schools, so we haven't changed that process.
Okay, so the building principal chooses who they would like to use for their campus? Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there an easy way to explain soul source? Is there an easy way to explain soul source? Thought of it. It was intuitive.
You don't have to go through the big process. All I want to say, I want to use this company.
Anywhere else?
All right, any more comments, board members? Seeing none, motion on the floor, all in favor? All opposed by the same? That motion carries. Okay, the time is now 8:23 PM. We will now adjourn in the closed session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551074, for the discussion of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, or discipline of public employees, including the discussion of the superintendent's annual evaluation and goals. Thank you.
Thank you.